Good evening and welcome to this December 6, 2007 special meeting of the Planning Board. Tonight we're having a work session which will be just for the Planning Board, but the Planning Board members can ask questions to whoever they would like. I'm sitting in for John Ritchie, whose father is in the hospital, so John's in the hospital. We just found out a minute ago. This work session is convened to consider the request of Borstwick Forest LLC formerly known as Islington Woods for two proposed zoning amendments to the city's 1995 zoning ordinance as amended to facilitate the development of an elderly congregate care facility. Amendments would include a definition for elderly congregate care facility and a revision to the Table of Use section to permit elderly congregate care facilities by special exception. The purpose of this work session is to allow the board to discuss this proposal further with the applicant. Time permitting, there will be some limited public comment. Relevant materials are available for public inspection in the Planning Department. The Board, the Board action in this matter has been deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the Board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. This work session was postponed from November 29, 2007 Planning Board work session. At the last meeting, we had an extensive presentation by the applicant. We had some, about a half hour of public comment, and the Board requested this meeting because there wasn't sufficient time to really discuss what we learned at the last meeting. So I'll open it up to Board members now for their comments. Mr. Coker, you had some interesting points that you brought up at the last meeting. You want to start us off?
Oh, thank you.
I'd also just point out that the applicant has handed out some information that you have.
I saw that, thank you. I think for my purposes, and again, I can only speak as a single member of the Board, but I am in essence issuing a challenge to this Board to, to really take this to the level of what really amounts to a policy debate for a bunch of reasons. And please, if you'll indulge me for a moment, we know why our zoning regulations exist, which is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare in accordance with the master plan for the future development of the city, blah, 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 and to encourage the most appropriate use of land and to protect and improve the quality of life for all people throughout Portsmouth. If we as a Board are to take our role seriously, then the master plan is our guiding document. It is what makes us do what we do. And to get a handle for myself on an overlay district and what is an overlay district versus a zoning amendment, I had a long conversation with our city attorney, and he did not speak of the merits of the project or anything about the project, but just in general about what an overlay district is. And it made more sense of, sense to me because it really creates a new district and puts conditions on the overlay, so it's really a more strict thing. And my, one of my concerns was public benefit, but public benefit is only part of this equation. It's not a good determinant alone is the public benefit there. It is not a valid reason alone, and creating a larger, more profitable project for a developer is also not a valid reason. Need is not a valid reason. So the question is, is this sound planning for this city to create an overlay district to allow this project to exist? And there are some facts here that are just undebatable facts. This is the last major undeveloped parcel in this city. It's also the last major component of our land use plan. And if you look at the master plan, and I urge everybody, it's a great exercise to go back section by section with what you know about this project and see how it fits the master plan. The vision, priorities for action, resource protection and sustainability, land use, housing, economic development, transportation, community facilities and services, natural resources and open space. I challenge this Board, please, let's have this policy debate. Take this proposal and take each of the components as are being presented to us. For instance, office research versus this proposal, traffic in one, traffic versus another, tax revenue in one, tax revenue in another. The question is, and it really just boils down to a very simple question, and this is what I hope to get answered, not tonight certainly, but eventually, is this city better off with this project or without this project? And that's really the bottom line, and that's where my focus is going to be. And again, I challenge the Board to focus on this as a policy question. Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Coker brought up the master plan last, our last meeting, and being a rookie here on the Planning Board, I thought that I would re-familiarize myself with the master plan, which I had read a couple of years ago. Now, struck by, correct me if I'm wrong, I was struck by the absence of language about elderly housing, struck by that. I didn't, I kept looking for it, didn't find it. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned is in, on the pages that he was referencing, I think 26 or 27 or whatever was the hope of perhaps a railhead coming to Portsmouth, particularly in this area where there are two rail lines converging and leaving a door open for that to happen, what a good thing that would be, and how incompatible, on the other hand, residential use would be near a railroad facility where residents, and I could see elderly residents becoming upset with the train noise or whatever. On the other hand, to be fair, looking at the other side of the issue, they might consider it a very convenient thing to be able to just pop on down to the train station and go to Boston or wherever. So anyway, that was, that was an element that crossed my mind. There's a lot of sort of conflicting material that we read in the, the master plan about this.
Counselor Dwyer?
I, I think John makes a really good point, and I would extend it this way. I think our master plan is really light on the analysis of housing, housing need, housing future, housing issues in terms of actionable items. It's one of the things that I'm proposing some additional planning for as we go forth in the next council. So I, I agree with what you've said. I don't think it, I don't think it means that the need for elderly housing is not described in the master plan. I think the master plan has simply not, not really taken on how, how as we've all come to understand, housing and housing need underlies so many other economic issues in the city.
But on the other hand, it does talk about workforce housing.
I, I think, if I can comment, because I said in, I'm not sure I was on that committee, but I said on that committee because I had an interest, and all the discussion focused on trying to address affordable housing. And that's such a complicated issue. We spend all the time there and the section winds up being weak because we couldn't come up with a really good solution for the affordable housing question.
Right, but we haven't really fully addressed the whole panoply of housing, and frankly, I think that's one of the problems why we haven't been able to address affordable housing, because we haven't really done much planning around the full issue of housing, what stock we have, what we need, what the costs are. And I think that's a challenge. It's one of the things that I'm proposing that, that we do as a city, but that's, that's another issue. I just wanted to, I think it's a really interesting point that you made. I don't think that is the only, it, we can't really generalize too much from that as it relates to this particular project, and I know you weren't trying to do that, but I wanted to put that out there. I think that, I think that actually makes it hard for us to engage in the way, John, that you want us to around housing, because I don't think our master plan has, has given us a good enough agenda to be able to follow it as it relates to this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Ms. Hayden?
I guess, I feel a little bit different about the master plan relative to housing, which is when, when we had the Housing Study Circle and their report, et cetera, I heard every time that we need workforce housing for workers. If we had heard, we need, you know, more, what's the place in Exeter, Riverwoods, we need more Haven Woods, we need more Piper Shores, I didn't hear any of that. We need a place for our parents to live, we need a place for us to live when we get older. So even though the Housing Section, I think, could be more definitive in terms of what the heck do we do about it, I don't think the need was identified as we need more senior housing. In fact, I, I think that people have said a lot in this town, including the Portsmouth Listen's and, and the Master Plan Development, we're doing great at senior housing because there's financing for that and it's palatable to people, but it's workforce housing that people come out against.
Mr. Coker?
Following up what Counselor Dwyer said, our goals, we have a, sort of a statement at the beginning of the Housing Section on page 31 of the master plan. Portsmouth is a regional job center within a high-cost housing market area in which the affordable housing supply is not keeping pace with economic growth. So they make reference to affordable housing. However, as we look at the goals, goal H1 through H4, H1 is maintain and expand the existing range of housing options in order to sustain neighborhoods and to accommodate households with varying needs. H2, provide housing opportunities for employees of local business. Three, achieve a coordinated and balanced regional approach to meeting shared housing needs. And four, preserve the city's affordable housing supply. I see three of these fours applying directly to this request, and, and while it is not specific to senior housing, it does give us the general goal of where we, the city, need to go with housing. And you're right, it doesn't say senior housing and that sort of thing. So I respectfully disagree. I think it's much clearer than it might appear, as it does give us a, a direction. And that's really all it does. It gives us a direction and leaves it to us to debate the details.
Counselor Dwyer?
Sure, it gives us a direction, and you know, if you followed anything that I've been doing, you'd know I'd be the last person to disagree with workforce housing. It's been what I've been spending a lot of time on. However, what I don't think was done is the kind of analysis that is about transfer of housing, the demographic changes that we're having, the kinds of housing stock that we'll transfer over, the proportion of housing that we have that's in the $250,000, $300,000 level. I don't think that level of analysis has been done that would, that would push us to really being able to have a debate that goes beyond the level, you know, that this is, that this is at. And we haven't had that. I think it's, you know, great that you're, you're inviting it. I don't think we necessarily have clear direction that says how to go about that or how to look at that in a, in a nuanced way, other than to say, of course, we need affordable housing for workforce housing. That doesn't preclude anything else.
Mr. Coviel?
I'm really troubled by this one. At the very beginning, I was one of the many people on the Board that thought we should do a total analysis of this site, whether we should, you know, look at other uses, not just office research or elderly housing. I wanted to open up to other ones, but as, as becomes the norm, it seems like developers are one step ahead of us in what we want to do, always proposing developments before we get a chance to look at the property. And so I think on this one, it's unfortunate reality that what we're deciding here is, are we going to have elderly housing or are we going to have office, offices? I don't think we're ever going to get a chance to do something else. So, and this is not my, my final opinion on it, but right now where I stand is that which one, which one of those two furthers master plan's goals? I don't see offices furthering that. I, I'm willing to listen to arguments for it. I see housing, even though it's elderly housing, and I think we have a large stock of elderly housing in the city, I think this only serves to open up some housing elsewhere. And maybe not, maybe not 100% of the housing that opens up gets filled up by, maybe not all the housing inside this new elderly housing facility will be filled up by Portsmouth houses that get opened up to a younger generation moving in. I don't know, but I'm trying to see the other side.
I'm wondering if it's really an either or, because didn't we in the master plan identify that we're going to study this area for potential rezonance?
I know, I wanted to do that, and I, I don't think we're going to get the chance, because I think if this gets denied, it'll, it's such a bustling area there. We have an expanding hospital.
The offices will go in.
I think medical offices go right in. So, I mean, I would love to have this, this pure, you know, this clean canvas and to, to start from this property, but I don't know in reality we're going to get that. That's just a concern of mine. I just thought I'd, Eric.
Mr. Coker?
To, to follow up on what Tony said and also with Counselor Dwyer, I think we can have this debate, and let me give you an example of how this debate would, would take place. Option A, Attorney McNeil said the could, we could put by a matter of right, office research here. Okay, let's look at that. How many jobs would that create? Not only how many jobs, but what kind of jobs versus this housing development, which would create another kind of jobs, which, and, and I'm, as you, I'm still open to debate, but for subject comparison, if you have office research and you have offices there, one can reasonably assume that the quality of the jobs will be higher than in a housing development where you have people that are cleaning and cooking and cutting the grass and it's service jobs. So the debate can be had that, yes, it may be better to have housing in some ways, but the quality of the jobs are higher. So is that something that we want in this city? And that's where the debate can happen. And I think if we look at this project, this proposed project, and we, we slice it up and we do the Gensu knife number with it, and we look at everything and, and try to make a best, the best decision we can, that policy debate can happen as we sort of analyze this project. And that's, that's what I meant by, by the policy debate, so.
Counselor Dwyer?
Well, I think Tony makes a really good point, and if I, if I were to think of, I mean, here's a challenge that I think we have. If I were to think of this property as having, and I'm going to use the term affordable and not mean low income, because I think when we say we have enough senior housing and when it's in the master plan, it is low-income restricted senior housing. So we absolutely have to understand that. If I were to think of this property, and you know, I would challenge all of you to think of this, if we were to think of this as affordable, meaning workforce, don't think worker, but think 80% to 120% of median income. If we were to think of this as housing for middle-aged to elderly population of the 80% to 120% of median income, I think for all of us, and, and we felt it was affordable, you know, we felt it was affordable for that range, right? I, I think it would be hard for, for any of us to say that's not what we need, because that's, that's the direction, I think, that our master plan says to us that we need. And when, and I, and, and I say middle-aged because I am middle-aged, even though I also fit in the elderly population, but I know that the elderly population who, who make moves into these kinds of housing, as we've heard from the consultants, tends to be on the older age. But if we really thought this was for people in the middle years, which includes like people who are still working in our community in that, you know, 60 to 70 age range, for example, if we were to think about that, I think many of us would feel very positively disposed to it, because the affordable housing crisis is coming as much from middle-aged people as it is from young entry-level workers. I think the challenge here is, when we think of it, is that elderly slice, when we think that the ages are more in the 80s than they are in the 60s and 70s. That's a challenge I'm having with it. Now, we still have to, we still are owed, and I know we will get some of the data about affordability and need that Mark, Mark Stebbins referred to last time in terms of the work that they had done. But if I were convinced that, you know, people in there, people from, I'll, I'll push it down a little bit, people from 55 to 75 who, who are working or, and who are in that 80% to 120% of median income level, if this was something that they, there was, they would be able to afford, then I think that meets some of the kinds of criteria that we're talking about. And I'd be interested in others' opinions on it.
There's, there's an assumption in your argument that this is affordable, and, but I'm, go back, I think Mr. Coker makes an interesting argument. I often wonder that as we create jobs in the city, we keep seeming to create lower-paying kinds of jobs. We promote, rightly so, downtown retail and downtown vitality, but those tend to be lower-paying jobs. And as Mr. Coker said, a housing development's going to create more lower-paying jobs, and then we compound our affordability problem. Those lower-paying people can't afford to live here, and now we have a bigger affordability problem. So I think if there is any argument on the other side, that's fairly powerful also. Ms. Hayden?
Yeah, I think, I, I'm sure they can tell us, but it's either they're targeting this to either age 62 and up or age 65 and up. I can't remember which at this point, but the way that they have their draft ordinance, overlay ordinance written now is that 10% of the units would be affordable to people that could basically sell their house for 90% of the median housing sale price, which is, you know, 320, 340, somewhere in there. So, which means you could buy a unit there. 10% of the people, the units would be reserved for people who could afford to pay somewhere between 280 and 300,000 for the unit. And then the cap on the amount of monthly income for the fees, that's 40% of your monthly income. So I think that's the kind of data that you're looking at, how many people locally.
Right.
And they have given us some of that in some of their past reports, but it's not all kind of packaged together, so it's easy to figure out.
Mr. Jalen, can I respectfully request you to make better use of the mic so we can't hear?
Sorry.
Mr. Coviel?
I feel like I'm advocating for the, for the applicant, and I, I don't mean to be. I just want to raise up some, some points. I, I agree with a lot of the other, other points from looking at it, keeping this office research or something else. But I, just thinking about this project, I think we have to also consider the neighborhood there. I think we all are. It may be a little naive to think that we're, I mean, we should let the cat out of the bag. I don't see us moving forward with either project with no access to Islington Street. I mean, me personally, I think it's kind of absurd to make, having, being a sustainable city, requiring whoever's there to drive all the way around to get to downtown services. So I think there's a big chance whatever goes in there is going to have access to Islington Street. You can see that in the, in the zoning matrix, that the, the fire and police want access to that. We haven't had a discussion about it, so I think that should enter into the conversation of what kind of traffic impact that would have on the neighborhood in that area. Also, and very similar to the Meadowbrook, I think we have a lot of maneuverability with this type of project, where they're asking, the applicant's asking for something, we can get a lot out of them. We can get a low-impact development, you know, a higher level of low-impact development design here. Some thinking points.
Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, I guess I, I'd like to sort of follow up and, and agree with Counselor Dwyer's point that, you know, I'm happy to engage in a policy discussion to the extent that we have the facts in terms of specifics within the master plan or the data, but ultimately, I feel like it, it does come down to the crux of age diversity and affordability vis-à-vis specifically work, quote, workforce housing. And, and if some of these numbers were different, the age was, was brought down a little bit and the 10% of, you know, affordability was brought up, you know, maybe there'd be some more comfort with this, but, you know, that's, to me, those are sort of the big challenges. So, you know, I'm not sure sort of where to go from there vis-à-vis your concerns and desire for more discussion.
Mr. Coker?
I, I don't remember one or the other. Counselor Dwyer or Tony referred to, the developer must designate, well, maybe it was Cindy, I'm sorry.
We all look alike.
Developer must designate 10% of all units as affordable. The term affordable shall mean that the units will sell for no more than 90% of the price of the median value home in Portsmouth. I think we've got to be very careful here, because we want to make sure that it's an apples-to-apples comparison. Here's what I mean. This will not be a, should this go forward, this will not be a traditional 100-by-100 lot with a home sitting on it, that sort of thing. This will be a higher-density development. Therefore, comparing 90% of the price of something that is, I don't know, a 100-by-100 lot with a house, John, I mean, you could, you can, I hope you, and maybe you can help me articulate this a little bit better.
Running the numbers.
But, but to sell one of these units at 90% of the cost of a home may not be an accurate comparison. Do you follow my logic? Because these would be, let me give you an example.
It sort of says the smallest one is 850 square feet, so I, when I read this, I wondered, is 850 square feet going to be 90% of the median price? That sounds pretty expensive.
Right, right. Good point.
Right, that, that's, yeah, I mean, that's why I think the, the interest and need data is so key, because it's hard for me to understand the, the want, let's put it that way, or the demand, I guess, that, the demand as it relates to this broader population that we're talking about. So the difference between, you know, so who wants to come into this? I mean, that's what I think you're saying. Is the, is the desire really there for enough people locally, even if the numbers worked to make that trade, is what I think you're saying.
Well, actually, what I'm doing is I'm trying to make an apples-to-apples comparison. If the applicant is saying that to mollify our concerns, or at least, that's probably the wrong term, to, to address our concerns about affordable housing, however we want to do that, they are proposing to sell, I'm sorry, let me get back to the specifics, wherever it went, that units would be, I'm sorry, I lost it. Ah, there it is. The term affordable shall mean that the units will sell for no more than 90% of the price of the median value home. I'm not sure that's an apples-to-apples comparison, because, for example, this could be like garden apartments, let's say, just, just sort of conceptually, versus a, a single-family home in the Woodlands or, or in Elwin Park or something. To determine that 90%, that may not be a real number, because inherently, the kind of unit that this would be, more dense, less yard, smaller in general, if they are selling for 90% of the value of a home, that may not be a real comparison. That was my only point, so, so I just wanted to.
Well, the, the price is what the price is, and it's a question of if anybody wants to pay it.
Well, that's true, but, but it's being provided to us as, as sort of an addressing a, an affordable.
Yeah, I hear you.
Housing need, so, thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
Well, and it may be a case of whether, not so much whether people locally want to live there, but whether they can afford to live there.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly.
And I think, you know, for me, if we were talking about this being housing that was broadly affordable to Portsmouth residents so that, you know, you knew your father that lives down the street can move in here, I think we would all feel very differently about that. But I, I think that, you know, we have in the back of our minds, whether it's true or not, and again, it gets back to the data that Counselor Dwyer wants, we have in the back of our mind these somehow, the local people can't really afford this. And yes, you know, as you say, the applicant has addressed that concern to some extent with ten percent, but, you know, if it was fifty percent, certainly I think we'd feel a lot better. Or if it was, I guess this is my perspective, this is a very important tract of land because, as somebody said, or several people said, you know, it's kind of the last big tract of land in town, and we know how much we need workforce housing, we know how much we need good jobs. If it was that kind of project being proposed, this would be far easier. But it's not, it's something very different.
And thus the debate.
And thus the debate, but I'm trying to like define the debate a little bit better in my own head. And really, if we had, I went back through some of the Portsmouth lists and stuff, and I thought, you know, is there anything here that says, we need this kind of housing? I didn't see that, that doesn't mean that there isn't a need for that, but I didn't see that. And what I did see when I looked back to my housing files was, you know, articles in the press from demographers saying, you know, that it's a real concern that housing is all turning to elderly, and that there's not the workforce housing, that that's kind of the trend in the region, it's not a good trend for our region because we won't have any little worker bees to work here if we don't give them housing, and we won't have any good high-end jobs if we don't do, you know, high-end offices. So, you know, I have very mixed feelings about it, and I've tried to look at it from a whole bunch of different angles, and I'm still looking at it from a whole bunch of different angles.
It seems, it seems difficult to assess whether it's affordable for Portsmouth residents because we don't have enough data. We've got bits and pieces from different reports, but sometimes they seem to me to contradict each other, or it's hard to pull them all together. It'd be good to know what the pricing of units would be, what the monthly fees were going to be, and there's a reference to the median income of people over sixty-two, it'd be nice to have that number. I mean, there's a bunch of numbers, a bunch of comments about numbers, but we don't have the numbers, and we're all struggling, we're trying to figure out, what is this, is this really affordable? Ms. Roberts.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I, excuse me, I agree with Donald Coker about the issue of apples and oranges. And maybe part of the problem is, it's really not apples and oranges, but I feel like we don't really have enough data to know, I mean, which is what, what everyone's saying. So if we can, as you said, try to figure out, well, what, what does a unit at that place, how does that compare? Maybe it is, maybe we can compare it, but I feel like at this point, you're right, we really don't have enough information to, unless someone that's in the business or, you know, some kind of HUD person has some better, you know, nationwide comparison, but, you know, it's another key piece of data that I feel like we need, you're right.
Counselor Dwyer.
On the other hand, let me say that in the absence of having a comprehensive housing plan and housing policy for the city, which I really think we should have, it is hard to hold one parcel responsible for the sins of the past.
Without question, yeah.
And, you know, I, I, you know, I say this especially when, you know, the council turned its back on thinking about the Dobels for affordable housing. We see how we've struggled with density in other areas, so, you know, I want to put that on the table, and I think that's kind of what Tony was, was getting at as well. The fact that we have not been successful in addressing housing in many, many attempts, and that we have had the rhetoric and not the will, doesn't mean that it can all get poured into one project.
I agree. Ms. Hayden.
I don't know the answer to this, but, yeah, I do find it interesting in their comparison tables, as you pointed out, Tony, that there's one way in for the residential, only one road access in, but it says in their comparison, we would have two different roads and one off Islington Street if it was office research. I don't know if that's true or not, I don't know what's driving that, if there's some regulation driving that. I mean, I know typically, we don't like having just one way into anything for public safety reasons, so I don't know if that's what that means.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're actually making progress here, and I think as we go through this debate, it's clear one of the issues, and by the way, Counselor Dwyer, I absolutely agree with you. I think affordability in the context that we all know affordability, affordable housing, workforce housing, is really not on the table here at all. I mean, that just, you're right, the, the sins of the father, so to speak, it can't be unloaded here on this project. As much as we would like to to get workforce housing, it's just not within the purview to do it. However, we have really identified, in my opinion, the first area that we really have to focus on, and that's affordability. We need more data on affordability. What does that mean? How big are these places relative to this and that? And we have our resident Realtor expert, Mr. Rice, can help us analyze that. So there's our first area. The second area, I'd like to sort of switch gears, is, is let's look at the quality of jobs that would come with office research, assuming that something would be built there, versus Borthwick Village, the proposal. Now, I'll bring my basic assumptions to the table here. I think if you have office research, you have offices, you have office space, I think medical offices was mentioned, those are higher-quality jobs, higher-paying jobs. The Borthwick Village, my basic assumption is, those would be, on the whole, lower-paying jobs, service, cleaning, grass-cutting, cooking, you know, those kinds of things, personal care attendance, those kinds of things. So from the perspective of what would be good for our city, I think in that very narrow piece, it would be clearly the higher-quality jobs are a better choice. So I think the second area that we might wish to look at, and I'm writing these down as we go, is jobs. And now, we're also making, Cindy made a great point about, it says, for office research, there'll be access from Borthwick Avenue and Islington Street. Yeah? Says who? You know, if, if the traffic is going to dump out onto Islington Street and overload the street, that is, on the face of it, a valid, legal, supportable reason to deny a project. So we're not forced to do that. So likewise, dumping everything out onto Borthwick Avenue, you know, the traffic is a very, very serious question. So to me, the second issue, if we could move it down, move the ball a little further down the field, would be the quality and type of jobs that would be created in one scenario versus the other.
If I could just chime in, I think on the traffic, I think you would have to consider that there's a certain amount of traffic that was assumed to be there if it was zoned office research, and there's a certain amount of traffic that would be there no matter what the zone. I think the better way to deal with this is whether or not there would be access out to Islington Street is a site-related issue.
Yeah.
It really isn't that important at this phase. I think your comment to assume there won't be any connection is probably as false as saying there will be a connection. What they are saying right now is, this is the way they see it, and I think Cindy's raised a very good point, we know our emergency services may not buy into that. So that's sort of another element that would be common to either scenario.
Okay, that's fair. And there've been no studies on this, new studies on this hydrology, the water impacts, it hasn't been made in here.
Not that I know of.
They did submit in their, one of these, they have some, some information, is that just wetlands?
I would say it's prelim.
Preliminary environmental study.
Yeah.
On tab four.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe try to link up two of the points that Mr. Coker just made about quality and type of jobs and traffic, even though, you know, we're not necessarily thinking about, you know, street directions and that kind of thing. The, to me, one of the, the points that was really highlighted during the master plan process in addition to affordable housing was sustainability, and that had various ramifications, impacts, but I think it's something that we should always be keeping in mind, and generally we do when we're looking at site plan review or whatever, but, for instance, I'm thinking, you know, how does quality of job relate to sustainability? If, if a project results in, quote, I don't know, lower-quality jobs or, or jobs that aren't as high-paying, then it seems like with our housing situation in the city itself, the people in those service positions may not be able to afford to actually live in the city. So are we then encouraging this situation where we've got people coming from really far away versus, you know, I don't know, maybe this is just too kind of out there, theoretical of a point to make, but it seems like that's sort of a appendix, I guess, to the issue of job quality or type of job.
Mr. Coviell.
I think a lot of us are making assumptions based on our own just kind of personal view of what we think the, you know, the world is and how it operates. I don't, I don't know that a elderly care facility would have a lesser-paying job in total than a office, I don't know what the office would be. Perhaps it's all clerical, and it's not paying as much as that. I don't know if we, I don't know how we make that leap.
Yeah.
And, but I also wanted to bring up a point that Dave mentioned about the access to Islington Street. It's a question for Dave, the, wouldn't you think it's part of our consideration to, to look at if there was access on Islington Street, the impact that would have in this?
If you're in site review, certainly.
Are we comparing the two? No?
I think you can do that, too. I'm just trying to avoid the blanket statement, there will or there won't be.
I understand.
For example, if in site review, it was a level of service C and it goes to a level of service D, you have the ability to require them to bring it up to a level of service C. If it was D, you would have the ability to say, you shall not decrease it further. So there might be substantial off-site improvements, but those are all related to other issues. I think the key one that you're doing is, what is the city's long-term vision for the best use of this property? Thank you.
Counselor Dwyer.
I was going to make the same point that Tony is, you know, from two perspectives around quality of jobs, that if office research really just generically brought that higher quality of job, look at what we've done at P's, we would have a higher median wage in this area than we do. And in every affordable housing discussion I've been in, the largest group that needs affordable housing are people in the health and medical professions, because there are lots of low-income jobs. We tend to think of doctor, but that's not what most of the jobs are. So I'm not saying you're wrong, but I think Tony's point is, it's an assumption that it wouldn't be fair assumption to simply say that any office research is going to bring higher-wage jobs. It doesn't seem to be true here. It doesn't, you know, there are certain kinds of locations, and I think we recently had the Port Walk before us talking about the kinds of recruitment that they are doing for businesses. There might be a higher-income job there, but just because it's zoned office research doesn't mean it's going to be a higher-wage job.
Mr. Coker.
Actually, I, I agree with that, and I admitted early that we're bringing our personal biases to this, so I'm, I can be proven wrong, it's not beyond the realm of possibility. Although I do note, on this, the comparison of significant zoning issues that was handed out tonight, it's a, it's an expanded version of the one that's in the back of the Borthwick Forest LLC table of contents that we were given at our planning board of November 29th, it does say, in office research, job creation, seven-hundred-and-fifty employees, job creation for Borthwick Village, eighty. That is a significant difference in the number of jobs. And I would make a side bet that if we looked at office research versus this, I think we would find, and I just, I'm going with my gut instinct here, that office-based jobs will be of a higher quality, quality in quotes, a pay level or skill level or whatever, than what would be created at, at a proposal like Borthwick Village. I think personally, from that piece of information alone, I would look at office research and say, yeah, that's, you know, for the creation of jobs.
Oh, in terms of quantity?
Quantity. Now, quality's another question, and I think that's open to debate, it really is. So there would be like number two, jobs. Quality of jobs, quantity of jobs, if we believe these estimates, we, we see that, but the quality of the jobs is the question.
Mr. Coviell.
It's odd that the person who commutes ten feet every day with a job brings this up.
I got you beat.
I just have to go downstairs. Again, in the morning, I think of thirty-three and bypass seven-hundred-and-fifty cars, assuming, hopefully there's carpooling, seven-hundred-and-fifty cars additionally every day on thirty-three, with lows going in on thirty-three. Versus eighty employees.
Good point.
I could just suggest another way of looking at it, perhaps. I think you had a good point, that the trade port has been quite an impact. I think we all recall that slide in the master plan, which shows how the city has become a major employment force.
Right.
Where now more and more people are coming in to work, whereas thirty years ago, it was the reverse. I think where you may want to look at your median income may be in the surrounding communities, because people are commuting to the trade port from, the commuting shed is significantly wider, the commute is far more than it ever used to be. So the prosperity is not really Portsmouth, it's really surrounding communities. Also Portsmouth housing, fifty percent renter, fifty percent single-family, and of that fifty percent, what, twenty-five percent of it is subsidized? So we're always going to be a bit lower when you do the comparison.
Ms. Hayden.
This is more of a question probably ultimately for the applicant unless someone here knows the answer, but when I was looking back at the info they presented previously, not this most recent proposal we talked about last week, that proposal we talked about last week was a density of two-thousand square feet per unit. Previously, it was twenty-five-hundred square feet per unit. But whichever one you, whichever one is the one that they're talking about now, when I do the numbers on this thirty-seven-and-a-half-acre parcel and use two-thousand square feet, I get a density of eight-hundred-and-sixteen units. So my question for them would just be, is build-out something like that, or is build-out the four-eighty-two they've been talking about? And I just think it's an important piece of information that we know, which I'm sure they could easily answer. I'm not trying to.
Build-out.
Easily answer.
All right.
That means that in the proposal, then, the density could be increased so that we wouldn't have any issue. That would be the.
Right, if, yeah, if their build-out that they're looking for is four-eighty-two, then you just adjust the density to get there.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Chair. Mr. Coviell.
Since, since we've, we've now opened them up to answering questions, can I ask a question? In one of their proceedings, they mentioned, this is not Riverwoods, and it was, and I didn't know if they meant the look, not Riverwoods, or the how they operate, or both. I wonder if they could respond to that. I know what Riverwoods look like, I worked on the project, so I was trying to figure out what they meant by that. And they meant like, I think when their, their connotation was, it was something better.
I think they meant it was level of service, because of Riverwoods is the full continuum of care, and this is really independent living with like eighty or eighty-two.
In the context that he said it, in the context that he said it, it didn't sound like that, so I just wondered if they could.
Cindy's answer is correct.
Okay.
I love being right occasionally.
There are a couple contrasts.
Can you get the microphone?
Couple contrasts are there with Woods.
A is the quality, because we feel that we're going to be a much higher quality. B is, we're going to be trying to attract a much younger crowd. We feel that, that what we're designing here will bring in people younger than they, we bring them in at Riverwoods, because there isn't, is, is not the nursing home feeling, you're not going there to die, okay? Which a lot of people think of as Riverwoods, as there's independent, but really, I'm going in there because I'm going to be sick soon, and so I got to have that, that assisted-in-nursing there. So there is the combination. We don't want this to be felt of as, I'm going, my kids are sending me to the home, okay? We want this is, to be thought of as, this is my home. I don't know if that answers.
When you say younger, can you give an age? I don't know what younger is.
Yeah, our goal is to bring down the age somewhere between five to ten years from the, you know, right now, people in Riverwoods are moving in. the, you know, right now, people in, in Riverwoods are moving in, in their 70s. We'd like to see, well, and what is the new 70s, right? I mean, as, as, as the, as the baby, baby boom generation's getting old. But we'd like to see some people moving in there, and that's why we put the limit at the age 62. We'd like to see people moving in there in their 60s.
Okay.
You know, they're tired of the big house and the lawn and the garden and so forth, and this is, this is a great alternative. Um, and it has a bunch of amenities that they can't get elsewhere, like the pool, the health club, the, um, the, um, area where they can, they can get lifelong learning and that type of thing, which they can't have sitting in their single-family home.
There's no assisted, there's no assistance.
Use the mic, John.
Oh, excuse me. There's no onsite assistance.
For health?
Right.
Oh, no, definitely, John. There's, there is, the way we're setting this up is that people can get in their own unit. Our goal is to make it such that only at the last resort do they have to leave their home, okay? Leave their unit or their home. They can get as much care as they require in their unit and stay there as long as possible. The other difference between a Riverwoods and us is that you get to a certain level and they tell you, it's time to move. You have to move to assisted living. And then your assisted living, and when it's, they feel it's time, not when you it feels it's time, they move you to nursing home, okay? Our goal here is to have the assisted living, which takes care of, in, in assisted living, higher-end assisted living, takes care of 90% of, of what we think of as nursing home needs. It's, um, nursing homes right now are being used primarily for rehab. You've had a heart attack, you've gone to have a bypass, you have to rehab, you go to a nursing home. So we're going to have that medical assistance onsite. The majority, we hope that people will take advantage of it in their unit. The husband's healthy, the wife's sick, vice versa. They can still stay together in that, in their unit, um, and will help provide that extra level of care. Once they get into some dementia issues, et cetera, where they really can't be on their own in their unit, then, you know, we'll have the assisted living available for them. So there will definitely be healthcare.
Outside of their unit.
Outside of their unit, yeah.
Would that be onsite, the assisted living, or is that a separate?
Yes, yeah, we'll have, what we propose is 70 units of assisted living onsite.
Mr. Coviallo.
Um, I've been involved in several projects with this elderly care. The, the age numbers seem right. My, my experience is when they have the nursing care, the average age is around 83. It's much, it's much older than you think. And I think the, with a facility like this, it would be a little depressed in age, probably in the, in the high to mid 70s. Uh, you can also tell, Mr. Sevens doesn't do the marketing for Riverwoods, but it is a little bit more gentle when it's time to move from, from dependent care, independent care to dependent care. It isn't so rigid, you know? It's usually, it's usually a group decision and stuff like that. I'm sure it'd be very similar to here, uh, where if you really needed to have a nursing, a true nursing care facility, that while you wouldn't be kicked out, it certainly would be contacting your family and letting you, letting you know that your, your parent needs to move.
Mr. Coker.
Um, I guess a, a question for the applicant, um, and, and I can't put my finger on it right now, but somewhere in here, um, we make reference in our master plan to, uh, younger people, providing a, a, an environment where younger people would want to come to Portsmouth. Just question your basic assumptions for a moment. Why 62? Why not 50? Why not, why not 45?
In terms of one's ability to discriminate in housing, this is true outright discrimination by age. There are three categories in which you can do it in the state of New Hampshire. 55, 62, and 65. So in my opinion, we do not have the legal ability to limit this to people who are 25. There's no authority for it. It, it would be just like discriminating on the basis of race. We are in a position where we have limited opportunities to discriminate in housing, and on the basis of age, it's those three categories.
Well, then let me, let me propose to you, why, why not waive, and again, this is just in the vein of questioning my basic assumptions.
Right.
Why not waive the age requirements totally and have a model where people buy in? Monthly fees? Sort of a, sort of a modified condo, sort of that, you know what I mean?
Well, let, let me speak to that briefly. The first time that I came before this board with a proposal for this site, and some of you were there and some of you weren't, and I looked at all my materials today before I came here. The Chinburg proposal proposed that this parcel be rezoned to business, because in business, two-thirds of the housing could be, two-thirds of the site could be residential and one-third would be business. It was not well-received here.
Yeah, I don't know.
We also provided for a section for studio apartments for artists and things of that nature. That developer decided, based on the reaction that it received at the city, not to proceed and sold the project to the present developers. When Mr. Coviallo started the meeting tonight and you talk about making a reasoned zoning decision on this case, I think it has to be made in the context of economic and zoning reality. The reason that I brought forward these two comparisons to place on your desk were for a couple of reasons. The first is, since 2004, your planning director has suggested to me repeatedly that this area should be office research and has not wavered. So in terms of, in terms of the issue of our coming forward to develop an argument, it seemed to me we had to take on the existing zoning and convince you that some kind of a change may be in order. But more importantly, on the issue of affordable housing for this parcel, and I'll speak to Mr. Rice, there cannot be affordable housing on this parcel. The land is too expensive. There are no government subsidies to support affordable housing on this site. There is a no, there is not a Massachusetts 40B mandatory affordable housing provision. I deal with affordable housing in every community that I go to with projects. In most places, it's completely ill-defined, they don't know really what they're looking for, and every community talks about it and almost every community does nothing about it. So in the context of this particular parcel of land, given its history in your master plan, given the propensities of the planning department, given your reaction to a prior use that was two-thirds residential, it seemed that this kind of a comparison for a unique use that we thought demographically would work in the community was what we wished to bring forward, considering matters that related to fiscal impacts, traffic, et cetera. I can respond to the traffic issue, uh, and I can respond to some of these other issues, and we apologize if you still don't feel you have enough with regard to the numbers on the affordability provision. The best way, in our view, of providing for affordable housing in Portsmouth is to approve this project. The reason is this. This is the only site of any major consequence to support a large project that's left in Portsmouth. The people who will occupy these units will leave their houses. Affordable housing will not be built on this site. So there is a greater potential for affordable housing by providing an alternative to people who will leave their housings, housing to go to a desirable location than to think about a concept that in all candor will not happen here. And what Mr. Coviallo also said, and I need to respond to what Ms. Dwyer said when she was, I think, talking about writing a poem about, talking about a threat of a office context, something like that?
[laughing].
What was it? Reading a poem?
Yes.
Why would one bring in the Commerce Center? Uh... Board. We're supposedly asking the questions. Few reasons. The developers build office complexes. The site is owned, is owned for offices. The planning department has talked about offices for years. Office complexes look like this. So we felt it was not a threat, it was an explanation of, of what we felt was.
Are you still answering a question? Who, who, Ms. Hayden?
I appreciate, um, Mr. McNeil's input, but I just want to make sure that that's what the board wants this work session to turn into, because originally we were going to have a work session if we have specific questions for the applicant. My preference would be to ask a concrete question and get an answer, but this is supposed to be our back-and-forthing, not.
I'll go further. Malcolm McNeil makes a presentation that goes beyond the questions, you've got to open this up to the public.
Well, let me just say this, Mr. Chairman.
I think you should wait for the question that comes, and it may come, but you've brought up traffic, you've brought other issues. The one issue that was asked was from Mr. Coker.
Mr. Coker asked about traffic. There was another person.
My, my question, Malcolm, was, uh, very specific, and, and I'll, I'll ask it again because I'm not, forgive me if I blanked and didn't hear the answer, but why not eliminate the age restriction altogether?
I think he actually answered that.
But you said it was based on discrimination.
I'll have.
The inability to discriminate.
Well, could, could we, could we go back to our board discussion?
Yeah, this was not what this was intended to be.
Right. Because it's really important for this board to talk about this, and I, I understood his answer, and I'd be happy to give my.
Let me, let me say this. I, I tried to ascertain what this meeting would be about. We've tried to be prepared to answer your questions, and we'd like to have the opportunity to do it.
I'm sure there will be other meetings where you'll be invited to participate.
Then I'll ask Cindy, since I, I either didn't comprehend his answer.
Why don't you direct it to me and I'll try?
David, could you paraphrase, uh, Counselor McNeil's?
Law prohibits us from doing it, we're not going to do it. If we were going to do it, the only ages we could do it are 55, 62, and 65.
But that, in, in my humble opinion, that's not an answer.
No, it was a very good answer.
One, one could have a development without age restriction.
Yes, but they're not going to propose that. And they also mentioned that when that proposal was brought before this board with Chinburg, it was not viewed favorably and it was withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it, in 10 words.
Okay.
Mr. Hayden.
I, I just want to clarify my concern about what was going on here, because my feeling is this board really needs to hash through these issues, and I, and I think David is correct that that's not so much, it, it goes beyond answering the question and, and trying to convince this board of their position, and, and David's exactly right. If that's going to happen, the people sitting here who have other concerns ought to be able to do the same thing. And I thought what this meeting was about tonight, and I'm sure it's frustrating for them sitting here, listening to us maybe having some of the information right and some of it not, and some of us bringing issues that are a little off the farm. Just to clarify my own position, I, I in no way advocate that we should zone this differently so that it can only be affordable housing. I don't think that is even remotely a possibility. My only point was, this would be so easy if that's what they were proposing, because there's a lot of community will to have that kind of housing. I know that's not what they're proposing, and there's, I have no intention of pushing in that direction. I, I, I guess for me, one thing that I feel like zoning is all about is surrounding compatible land uses. And I, and I guess it, it just came to my attention from John Rice that he doesn't have this, the, one of their original reports, because he wasn't on the board then from June 21, and, and ML may or may not have that as well, I can't remember the timing, but.
I think I do, but I didn't bring it.
You know, if at least John Rice could get that, so that we make sure.
We'll get copies of that, too.
Same information. Because there's some good information in there, and I think for me, when I look at that plan and say, what's around this thing? What, what would be the most compatible use there with all the surrounding land uses? I mean, that's what zoning's about, um, in part, in my mind, and I think that's something we all.
Let me just add on for the process. I don't know where the board's going to go from here, but I assume you're going to have at least one more public session on this, in which case everyone is going to have another opportunity to sway the board, answer questions and respond. This is your work session, so you can move your ball forward.
Mr. Coviallo.
I don't know how to get this question answered. I guess, well, I'll ask the, the board. It sounds like some people would be in favor of this. If there's, if the 10% and maybe the 90% median, um, housing costs aren't rigid numbers, they're flexible, and, and we knew more about that, it sounded like we'd be more favorable towards this. I wanted to ask the question, hesitant now, is to ask the applicant, are those rigid numbers? Is that, is that it? And, and that's, that it alone? What do we think?
Well, I, I felt we asked that last time, and the response was that the criteria put forth are for negotiation, that the, that those were part of the, I guess you'd call it contract criteria or whatever in this type of zoning, and that that's something that's up for discussion and for negotiation. That's what I thought the answer was last time.
That's the answer I remember also.
Sure.
Mel Hayden.
I don't want to sound like I'm advocating, but I would say that, and, and I didn't bring everything because I brought the wrong stuff, but I, I, first of all, I commend everybody on the board for doing what I think this board is supposed to do, which is to think about any proposal, especially for rezoning, from a community perspective. What does the community need? What does the master plan say the community needs? I think the question's about who's going to live here? Is this for our community or for people from outside, et cetera? Um, all of those are really important. But from a zoning perspective, I think it is a very interesting overlay district zoning proposal, because it is one of the only places in our ordinance that would, if it were adopted, would actually have an affordability requirement. Now, we may quibble with the affordability requirement, we may want to negotiate it, we may want to tweak it, see if that's acceptable and so forth, but this takes our current ordinance and moves it in a very positive direction in terms of that master plan requirement. And I'm not entirely familiar with every element of the zoning ordinance, but I haven't seen this in it.
Ms. Dwyer.
I agree with that, and let me also state one thing that I think is maybe on our minds, it's on my mind that we haven't stated, that maybe is a roadblock that I don't think is necessarily a fair roadblock. It's not fair to put this burden on the applicant, but it's certainly a roadblock I think is standing in our way. If tomorrow, uh, everybody who had a median income house moved into this property happily, I think what's on our mind is that there, that our workers that we are looking for housing for couldn't afford those houses. All right? So I just wanted to say that, because I think, now, that's not the applicant's burden. That means that we, we haven't planned for, thought about the other ways to, um, get into those houses, get, get people into, um, housing that they can afford, who work here, who make the median wage. That doesn't take away from that we still need to worry about all these things, but I think that's kind of an unstated problem here, an unstated assumption, that even if their assumption about turnover is true, our concern is that that's, that's creating, that's creating open housing, but it's not for the people that we've been looking for affordability for. That said, I, I would repeat again, though, I don't think that is this property's burden.
But it is a reality.
It's a reality.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's this property's burden.
And, and Attorney McNeil real, and I wrote it down, economic and zoning reality, those were his words. So, that is a reality.
But, I mean, isn't it possible in an overlay zone to include rental units for workers? I mean, couldn't that be done? I'm not saying it should be done, I'm saying couldn't that be done? If this is a residential development?
Well, I think that's, you know, potentially what that 10% of affordability or whatever could turn into. I mean, I, I think that would be something that could be discussed.
Mr. Coker.
But as a practical matter, I don't think people, as you say, could afford that 10%. I, I think the, the, the cost will be too high for the average worker in the city. I, I'd like to sort of shift gears again a little bit, and, and just, again, looking at the comparison of significant zoning issues, um, traffic, we, we don't have a specific handle on traffic. One can reasonably assume that if it goes office research, there will be more traffic than if it were to go in the Borthwick Village way.
And yet, it's better peak hour traffic if it's residential. It's more spread out.
Well, the reason I bring that up is that we will all be aware of the traffic issues on Islington Street. And one of the things that we can do as a board, I believe it's within our purview, David, please correct me if I'm wrong, is in site review and traffic studies and the like, we can say, you will stagger, just as an example. studies and the like, we can say, you will stagger, just as an example, stagger your starting hours. You will start at 7:30 in some, and 8 o'clock in others, and 8:30 in others.
You would lack the authority to do that.
We do lack the authority? Hmm, okay.
Nice thought, though.
Yeah, nice thought. And so, having that idea shot out of the water, then we could try another one.
You could encourage it.
You could encourage it, and as Arthur Parrott once told me, he said, the best way to encourage something is to phrase it as, I would be much more supportive of this application.
You have definitely learned some fine arts.
I did. A butter impact. We look at the difference, office research, Borthwick Village. Increased traffic flow for Islington Street residents, maybe, maybe not. Less aesthetically pleasing commercial view shed, perhaps. Large parking lots are less bucolic and produce a large volume of light from parking lot lamps. I respectfully disagree with that, with dark sky friendly lights. That, I think, is sort of a straw man. So, from the butter impact, I think we would, we would have to look at, obviously, the neighbors, the traffic, and how it flows. So, I guess at this point, there's really not much to discuss, other than, in my opinion, the one about the volume of light is just sort of a red herring, so I'll leave it at that. And if no one follows up, the next one, the big one, in my opinion, other than the neighbors and the traffic, is the environmental impact. If ever you wish to see how a wetland can be destroyed in 30 years, go walk around there. I used to hunt ducks back in there many, many years ago when I first came to Portsmouth, and that wetland is essentially gone. There's been a lot of talk about the hydrology and flowing and the wrong, it's flooding and all of this, so I think the environmental impact of this is going to be huge. So, one way or the other, whether it goes office research or whether it goes to Borthwick Village, that the environmental piece is going to be very huge, the wildlife corridors, all of that sort of stuff. So, that's, I'm adding that one to the list, too, so...
I might as well, I might as well say it. I'm thinking, I'm looking at this property as drawn out with the elderly... Put it up so people can see. It's a large recreation area there. I would be much more supportive if that large recreation area was something for the true recreation for our city.
I think it is.
That'd be fantastic, as a playing field, ball field, bringing younger people next to older people. I wanted to say it.
Arthur Parrott was a good teacher.
Do you have any other comments? Councilor Dwyer.
I do believe, and, you know, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I do believe that at our last meeting, in response to questions, there was the suggestion that additional financial data would be, would be shared with us in terms of needs assessment, so...
I did talk to the applicant about that, and I think they would be asking if you could be as specific as possible about what you would like. I will try to convey that, and I'm sure Attorney McNeil will be taking notes so that he can provide, because they're, I believe, a little uncertain as to what you are looking for.
I'll talk to a couple of things. I know that in his presentation last week, Mr. Stevens indicated that there was data that really convinced him of the finances when we were talking about the proportion of income that it takes to, that it would take for people to live here. We were, we've been interested for several meetings in the estimated costs of assisted living services, or the kinds of services that would be projected, that would be added to the monthly fee, something that I would call, I don't know what the right term in the, in the business is for it, but I would call a kind of a demand assessment, or a, you know, how do we know who, what's the profile of people who are suggesting that they're interested, or, or what's the, what's the buyerhood likelihood? That kind of information that would help to counter the reaction that we all had to the data that was collected from the northern Massachusetts area, that we really wanted that data more to be about Portsmouth and surrounding areas. That's what I remember us talking about last time for data.
I'd add, I'd like to see what the three, I guess there's three different sized units, what the cost would be to those three units? Purchase price?
To construct...
No, the purchase price. Purchase price, what the monthly fees would be for those three units, and then what any fees would be for assisted living on top of that, and the mention of what the median income of people 62 and over in Portsmouth is. So, that 40% of the median income...
I think, I think Mr. Holden had a better, had a good point, that perhaps 62% in Portsmouth isn't a good number. Perhaps it's 62% in Rockingham County.
I would say Portsmouth.
Well, he was saying Portsmouth is probably depressed, artificially depressed.
But my concern has always been, how affordable is this for people in Portsmouth?
You know what you can do, though?
Okay, so you're saying it's skewed down because of the rentals?
No, but you can do 40, you can do the median income for people over 62 that live in owner occupied housing.
We can get that number?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, owner occupied housing.
Wasn't there also a question about how the sale of the units would be done? How you were going to, in other words, if somebody needed to sell their unit, they would have a certain amount of time and...
Like 30 days, they get 90%. That's in the, that's a buyback plan.
Yeah.
Reacquire units at 100% of their acquisition cost within 30 days of a resident's departure.
That's for an affordable unit, and I think it's 80 to 90% if it's a regular...
But I think the question was then, how would they be marketed after that?
Right, would they maintain their affordability, in other words?
Both, both units, how would they be marketed? Affordable units and typical units.
And I wanted to clarify Counselor Dwyer's point about what sounded like kind of a market analysis, or the buyer, sort of what the likelihood of buyers was. Maybe she, maybe this isn't what she was saying, but I guess I was interested in sort of who can afford this. I guess that's just another way for me to think about it, and I'm, I'm not sure if that, if that's how you saw your...
I was actually asking for a subset of that, but I think both is important. Who can afford it and who wants to?
Right.
Well, anecdotally, everybody that's proposing this project has indicated their parents would live there.
Or them.
And none of them live in Portsmouth.
I think that's what this is. It's for people from out of town. I mean, I think largely that's what we'd be doing, perhaps the parents of people who live in town, but, and that's, that's not necessarily bad, but that's what it is.
But that would be an answer. That would be part of the answer.
So, do we have marching orders for the next meeting now?
Not quite.
I'd be as, they're very good at taking notes. This is really your opportunity to structure what you're looking for. Don was looking for traffic stuff. You might want to just indicate some of that.
I was just going to bring up a new topic, which is the whole enforceability related to contract zoning or this kind of overlay zoning, because there are a lot of provisions in it, and the challenge then, or the burden for monitoring, I mean, the appeal of it is the specificity, but then the other side of it is, how does that get managed, operated? And maybe just some examples of how that's done in other places, or even for the planning department.
Actually, documents would be helpful.
Well, would we like to maybe invite Bob Sullivan to our next meeting to comment on...
Along those lines, I have a question. Do we do the specificity of the contract zoning before we approve the zoning, or do we do chicken and egg here? What's happened first?
We're going to find out. We're still gathering.
Speak conceptually about that. You know, if one were to do it, then they would do it this way, I think.
Mr. Coker.
Couple of other issues. On page two of the current comparison of significant zoning issues, under parking, there's more parking required for office research, significantly more impervious surface. We do have control over impervious surface. We can require pervious.
I'd also like to address something else that you brought up there. One of the concerns the department had was, this is going under the term of elderly housing, and yet we keep hearing it getting broadened. If it isn't elderly housing, is it still subject to the one parking space per unit? I don't, for a moment, believe that every unit here will have but one car. I think we're going to have more than one car per unit, and this perhaps should be treated as either a hybrid or something else, no pun intended, but the parking is something that the department continues to be concerned about, so you're bringing it...
Good point. What is our city's definition?
They don't have one.
Elderly housing would be one. A dwelling unit would be one and a half, and I think there is a good discussion as to whether one and a half is even appropriate for residential units today, and I think you'll be looking at that at some point.
The zoning matrix brings up a good point about, I mean, these are, these are grandparents. They're going to have family visiting them, you know, not only their cars, they're going to have visitors.
Yeah, so perhaps the city attorney might weigh in as to the legal definition of elderly housing versus...
I think you have the authority to do that. I don't think, the way I'm hearing this project, is totally elderly housing. I mean, they're saying it's going to be broadened out. We're looking to reduce the age. We're hoping that people will come in that are 62.
Well, if you're 25 and it's 62 to get in, that's, that's a relative elderly housing thing. I'll be 60 in July, so I'm pretty close.
I just raised the issue of that as a point.
Good point. Couple of other things, though, in terms of architectural, no transition zone. We have, we have purview on that. Significant lighting impact for parking, again, dark sky friendly, we can require that no light leave the parking lot. Minimal landscaping, I think we have the ability to advise people, and certainly we would be much more supportive of a proposal that was well landscaped. So, I'm not sure I buy all of the arguments for office research, but the one that really holds my attention, this is what holds my attention, job creation, 750 employees, job creation, 80 employees. That's, that can have a significant economic impact on this city. Now, the other side of that is, is also income, tax revenue. I don't see the numbers. There it is. 146.5 versus a million 3. You know, that, that'll get the city's attention in a hurry if one is to agree with the 146.5. I would like to see a little more, what's the right word? A little more verification of those numbers. Those numbers were, particularly the 146.5, I don't know where that came from, and perhaps there was just a, you know, a 482 times X for the, for the revenue for the, for the Borthwick Village proposal. So, I would like to understand where those numbers came from.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, presumably, if we got to 750, we got to 80, there's a little bit of backup data that goes with that. If they could just share that with us, it'd be helpful.
And do we feel that it's appropriate, considering our discussion about quality of jobs, to ask about a little more data, at least on the type of jobs in a facility like this? Since we're all admitting, we don't really know how this plays out.
And I would ask the question, not specifically a rhetorical question at this point, but how are we going to know who's moving into these offices? I mean, if you build office space, it could be...
Generic economic data.
Tony Coviallo's engineering firm, and John Rice opens his own real estate office.
Just generic analysis.
Let me give you a comparison. There are two office structures being built off of Borthwick Avenue today. They were proposed as business offices. They are now primarily medical office buildings.
Is that data available through the city, or?
Yeah.
Okay, then I would like to see it, just...
What data? I don't, are you asking him, say, 750 jobs, 100 of them are professional medical, 100 of them are lawyer?
No, I don't know what I'm asking. I'm trying to get a clarification on when you say 700... Okay, let me try it this way. Seven, the, the claim is being made that there will be 750 jobs created over the next four to 10 years. Okay, typically, in the office environment, what kind of jobs are those? David says that data's available.
I can indicate to you what the uses are, but let's put it this way. If John Rice's professional office is a real estate office, that's an office job. That's an allowed use. It'll employ people...
Well, right, but the question is, you know, is that a higher average income than a service job?
That one's harder to get at.
Yeah, I mean, I think the more meaningful information is to look around Portsmouth and see what kind of office jobs are coming to here, to this type of new facilities, this Class A office general.
Do we have any data that shows what level these jobs are paid at?
That's why I mentioned the two office buildings under construction now off of Borthwick Avenue proposes office now predominantly, predominantly medical.
So, you're implying that these would probably be primarily...
Well, I'm indicating there's a demand for medical office buildings such that a general office building went medical.
Especially next to a hospital that's probably going to double in size.
ML Gafford.
And that's what I wanted to raise. I mean, we've got a situation here, to Cindy Hayden's point, that, you know, we've got land on Borthwick in the hospital area. Is this the best use of the land in light of the developments at the hospital? I don't know whether there's a super saturation of medical offices, or whether, in fact, there's a persistent need for more, or whether this fulfills a need that isn't met, but I, and then to Tony's point, which is really what I was raising my hand for, this particular overlay proposal includes the possibility of working with a Portsmouth senior center to locate a senior center on the site. So, there may be some community needs that we would like to see met here. I don't know whether it's a ball field, but I think it's a worthy exercise to ask ourselves that question, and then it gets back to parking and the city's concern, because I'll tell you something, if there's a senior center here, or a ball field, or anything else that's for the community as a whole, there's probably inadequate parking to support that based on this plan. But I like the idea, and I also like the idea of possibly, since the master plan is pretty focused on workforce housing, looking into whether that can be provided, rather than an affordable elderly unit, since we seem to have quite a bit of those in Portsmouth.
Any more comments?
Just one other thing. If we're going to make changes, like to Borthwick Avenue, is there any way we can make changes to this chamber to make it warmer? Just wondering.
What was the last word?
Pleasing.
Recommodizing, sustainability.
We'll put a requisition in for next week.
It's this cold in the summer, too.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think in summary, I don't, I don't really know how I feel about this. I really don't. I think we've made progress in the policy debate. I think we still have a long way to go with more, with more information being required. I've noted affordability, these are just notes, jobs, environment, or environmental, I should say, enforceability, and tax revenue breakdown. Those things, to me, are pretty...
And if we could add to your list, future medical research, medical office needs, or that hospital corridor, or hospital node, or whatever we want to call it.
So, I mean, it's, it's an interesting proposal, but I am, I am not at all convinced it's, as, as ML said, the highest and best use of that land, given the needs of the city and the, the long-term goals.
Mr. Coviallo.
A lot of good has come from the analysis of supply and demand. I would say that if the, if the demand was medical office right now, they'd be proposing medical office. If the demand is housing, they'd be proposing housing, and I think what we're seeing here is proposing housing for that reason. So, I think that is going to answer your question in the end, but we'll let them answer that.
Oh, no, quite the contrary. Tony, before you go any further...
No, 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 I have the mic. Let me talk.
Take it away.
The, also in supply and demand, if we increase the supply of housing, that should help with demand, and it should naturally lower the cost, although probably may be insignificant, it should, just by, just by the science of supply and demand.
Thank you. My response is that that's not an either-or proposition. If you're faced with building office space, and one can make that a profitable venture... If you're faced with building office space, and one can make that a profitable venture, you're faced with building Borthwick Village, and that's also a profitable venture, one would tend to go with the more profitable venture, in my humble opinion. So it's not one or the other. It's, we got a couple of good ideas here, and as, and believe me, there is no greater free market card carrying capitalist than me.
John, don't say anything.
Where is your card?
Mr. Hayden.
Just to respond, Tony, briefly, I think that our, our problem is that if we were deciding right now, this point in time, I would lean more in the direction of this, but we have to look down the road, too. Five years from now, with the hospital doing this massive expansion, is there going to be a lot more demand for medical office? And, and I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't know how we want to, what the best way is for us to get that answered, but, you know, what I hear tonight is, there's merit in this proposal, I'm sure the applicant would wish that we would come to a much sooner decision on this. I don't hear the board saying tonight, no way, we are not in support of this. But I also hear the same kind of, I don't know, is that I feel that I, you know, there's pros, there's cons, and I'm still sitting on the fence, and I think that that is, is their kind of consensus, that everybody feels like that?
There may be, if I might, there may be just overwhelmingly powerful, the logical reasons why it's zoned office research, and... There you have it.
Sort of a basic statement that has a lot of power to it.
Well, you look at the, the demographics of that location, and I keep coming, the rail lines keep dancing in my head. Maybe I'm hung up on that, but I'm just, if, if the, if you do have office research there, you've got to supply those offices, and, and if you're looking for passenger lines as well, and you're looking for a terminal, if that's, if that was important, if that's came out of these studies, then I guess that's one whole aspect of this that has to be kind of overlooked, to go with this proposal, which does have many positive merits to it.
Well, I think the rail, rail lines were one of the concerns we had with the Islington Woods project.
Right.
It's one of the reasons we weren't as receptive as we might have been. Did I see your hand up, ML?
I was just going to ask that before we adjourn, because it sounds like things are winding down. It, it might be good to have a very specific going forward on this project kind of plan, even if it's just, we're going to collect this information, this information, we're going to come back within so much time, for the applicant, and for the public, and for us.
Dave Malista, it sounds like.
I think we needed other work sessions to be scheduled sometime in the few week fur, few week future, to address, hopefully the applicant can come back and answer most of these questions, and we can have a discussion with the applicant about the answers and...
I can tell you what dates it won't be. January 3rd, 10th are spoken for, January 17th is your next regular meeting, and we're not sure about the 24th to 31st. But if you assume that you'll get through your agenda on January 17th, I guess we could check into the availability of space for the 24th to 31st.
Do you assume we're going to get through our agenda? You probably know it better than us.
I think you might.
Might.
You guys are pretty good.
Are you just saying that?
True.
No, we can shoot for the 24 tentatively?
I think you could.
Okay.
Or if you want, you could direct us to pick whichever one is available.
I think the 24th, I will be, leave the software convention, so.
Should we, should we find out room availability and then propose some dates to the board?
We'll email them around to you.
Counsel Dwyer.
Good, thank you.
I hope you won't take this as overly cynical, but since we've been talking about demand and supply, it'd also say, think about the supply of kinds of people that are going to be needed to fill expanded hospital services and all the high-end retail that we have been approving. So, what would you need in order to supply vitality in those two areas, if you want to think about job sustenance and creation?
Customers, is that what you're saying?
Well, you'd need.
Customers who are about to be sick and who have a lot of disposable income. Great, great.
I mean, so if you're thinking about supply, and you're thinking only, you know, not from just one perspective, but, I mean, think about the kinds of things that we have approved over the last two years, and the kinds of supply of people who, who fit those. I mean, you know, that's.
That's cynical at all. That's economic and zoning reality.
You're saying the elderly are big consumers of retailing?
Well, I'm thinking of the kinds of, the demographics that we have been concerned about, you know, the other, the flip side of that comes with disposable income. We've been concerned about the, the other end of it, but the flip side of it.
Yeah.
I think the board has done a very good job tonight.
Okay. We all said? Can we have a motion to adjourn, if anyone would like to adjourn?
Tony.
Well, we have to make a motion to postpone to a time uncertain, yeah.
Why don't you postpone to the January 24th meeting? That way, we can keep the chain intact if we need to.
So moved. 7 o'clock.
All those a favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.